Good evening. This time I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of May 14, 2008. Let the record show, all members are present. I also want to point out to the audience, this is the Planning Commission meeting. Following Planning Commission, we will have a special meeting to go over a SPUD policy and a SPUD development, and then we'll have the zoning. So if you're here for zoning, you may be here awhile just listening to us discuss planning issues, but we're glad you're here. Also, I'd like to make sure everybody's aware of a amended agenda, just in case nobody received it and didn't see it. The Elmo Cannon property is not on the agenda. The John E. Anderson partition is not on the agenda. The Renee Williams property is not on the agenda, and Carl Stafford Estates has been removed from the agenda. All right, this time I do have a motion to accept the minutes of the April 9 meeting.
Motion.
On a motion by Michael Marshawn, seconded by Beverly Barre. This time I'd like to open up the floor for public comment. Anyone in the audience wishing to talk on an item not on the agenda, please come forward. You'll have three minutes to talk. Anyone wishing to speak? All right, public comment period is closed. All right. Oh, I saw you come this way, and then come on, sign in, please, if you would, sir.
You said I could speak if I had any questions about an agenda that is not going to be covered tonight?
Anything not on the agenda, yes, sir.
About the Carl Stafford Estates.
Okay.
I was sent a certified letter about that, I'm one of the adjacent property owners.
Okay.
When is that going to be?
Usually it's whenever they come back to us. They pulled it from the agenda.
Will I be notified?
Absolutely, yeah. Yes, you will.
Sir, which, there's two. There's one, one of the Carl Stafford Estates items is on the agenda, but there was an item that came up last month that's been removed, so which?
Yeah, maybe that's...
Carl Stafford Estates.
Do you know which lots it is, I guess?
Yeah, the A1.
Okay, okay, that is on the agenda. All right. Well, I'm sorry myself, I didn't mean to cause confusion. Thank you for pointing that out to us. All right. Okay, this time I'd like to recognize Julio Dumas and Ms. Allison from Planning for Excellence. Julio, why don't you make the introduction? A little bit about this, Julio and I have met with the Planning Excellence Group in Baton Rouge. Plan Baton Rouge has got a good step forward in good planning for the state and this organization, and I'll let Allison kind of do a little history, if she will, or Julio. But this is something, I think, Michael, when you had come up last month about doing a parish-wide master plan, I think this may just be the mechanism we're looking for to do what we want to do in this parish, so Julio?
All right, I'm gonna turn it over to the Center for Planning Excellence in just a second, but I'm going to be asking the Planning Commission to make two motions tonight. One of them is to approve an application, which is a very simple application, to the Center for Planning Excellence to begin the process with the funds that we have in the budget. The second motion is to ask the Planning Commission to recommend to the parish council that they authorize the parish president to sign the application requesting a grant request from the Center for Planning Excellence, subject to them receiving the funding from the federal government. That will enhance the budget that we have to really do a thorough, comprehensive plan for Ascension Parish. As part of that, the Center for Planning Excellence has also developed a lot of model ordinances for a zoning code and what have you. While we have a zoning code already, there are a lot of opportunities in that model ordinance for us to improve our zoning code, and we'll be looking at that as well as part of that process. The process is going to be a long, a long process. It'll involve a lot of, a lot of public meetings and public hearings throughout the parish with the community. It also, in order for it to be a successful, comprehensive plan, we've been talking to the Center for Planning Excellence of the need to involve the three municipalities to participate in it. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to the Center for Planning Excellence, so they can give us just a little brief, three-minute presentation on what's being proposed.
Thank you. My name is Allison Casio, and I work at the Center for Planning Excellence. We are a nonprofit organization that serves as a planning resource for Louisiana communities. And we were approached by members of the Planning Commission, it's been a few weeks now, to see about using some of our grant funding to assist y'all in completing a comprehensive plan for the parish. And I have a few slides that I'd like to show.
Go on.
Essentially, the process that we encourage and that we require if a parish or municipality seeks to use our funding is a very inclusive one, it's a very comprehensive one. A few things that I would just like to convey, planning is a long-term vision for your community. It's not a law, it's not a zoning code, it's simply a plan that brings together several different elements. And a good comprehensive plan would include transportation, land use, environmental resources and conservation, housing, recreation and open space, your infrastructure. All of these things must be brought together into one document. And I understand that Ascension has, has made a lot of headway with planning, and they, and that y'all have already done plans. This would be a more comprehensive look at things, beyond just a transportation or a land use study. And most importantly, we require a very public process from the very beginning, from the point at which you put out your request for proposals. We want the public involved, even when you go to select a firm to work in your community. We want the public involved with that, and we want, we want consultants to come in and present an interview in front of your community in a public format. And we have a process and a procedure for all of that. Again, this would not be a set of laws, this would be your guide and your blueprint to grow your community over the next few decades. We encourage a type of planning that's known as smart growth. And just real quickly, smart growth is basically providing a mix of land uses, a range of housing opportunities, a range of transportation options, walkable neighborhoods, preservation of open space, and basically just sort of an approach that gives people options. They may want to live in a more suburban atmosphere, and that's fine. But it would also provide options for people who can't walk, or who choose not to drive, things like that. And it provides your community with access, and it provides the elderly with independence. It's a certain approach to planning that we certainly encourage, and we hope that you would also look at. And most of all, smart growth just really requires public participation, too. That's one of the tenets of smart growth. I have also, several of you I know already have a copy of this, the Louisiana Speaks Planning Toolkit. It goes in further detail into what's included in the planning process, different best practices and techniques for planning, and I've given Ricky, your planning director, several copies, and we have several more at the office, in case y'all would like extra copies, or if anybody from the public would want one. Finally, our guidelines on our funding, we do require 100% match. We do require broad, demographically representative, public participation. We also require that you coordinate, in some capacity, with your neighboring jurisdictions, whether it's the municipalities, or whatever the case may be. But we do want some interaction between your neighboring jurisdictions. Your plan must include implementation steps that you can take while, when it's completed to see to it that it doesn't just sit on the shelf. And finally, we would act in an advisory role. We would, we would just sort of see to it that our guidelines are being met, and just help guide you through the process. And I will wrap it up there, if there aren't any further questions, and I hope to get an application from Ascension Parish soon, and we look forward to hopefully working with y'all. Thank you.
At the present time, what staff is proposing is to request for $100,000 matching grant that we'll use to fund that are currently in our budget as to match. And with that, you know, we're committed to start the process. One of the first steps that CPACs will be helping us with is developing an RFP, a sun RFP, so that we can get the right consultants on board to help us move forward. So...
You need two motions?
Yeah, the first motion that I need is, and I'll go ahead and make it, is to move to recommend to the parish council that they authorize the parish president to execute the application requesting the, a matching grant, the amount of $100,000.
Okay, I have a motion by Julio to submit the grant application to the parish council, seconded by Sherri Sloman. Any opposition? Motion carried.
And the second motion is, I'll make a motion that we direct staff to go ahead and submit the application relying entirely on the funds that we have on the budget, so that we can begin the process and get some of the preliminary work going as we move forward.
Okay, motion by Julio, seconded by Sherri Sloman, to submit the application and get the CPAC involved and get the process in motion. Any objection? Motion passes. I want to thank everybody for this. I think this is a step in a very positive direction. Like everybody has said, a long process, but a well-worthy effort. I think you'll really appreciate all that goes into this, and of course, another thing Allison pointed out, it's a very public, open arena. Everybody is encouraged to participate in this, so that at the end of the process, we have something that this parish can really move forward with and become a much better community than it is today. It's very good today, but I think we'd just be probably a shining star within the state. Yes, sir?
We've got staff, boss. Give me a chance for us to speak.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Just state your name, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Martha Collins, and I'm the grants officer for the parish. I do want you to know that we do support this, but under our grants policy and procedures, there will be some things that will have to be adhered to, so I just want you to be aware of that. We will work with Ricky Compton to make sure that all the guidelines are being met from the parish's perspective, because it does come through the parish on behalf of the Planning Commission. So there are some restrictions or some guidelines that we have to follow, and we will work through that. It's not just every, we can just say we're going to go get a grant.
Right.
So that, I just want you to be aware that there are some additional information and requirements that we do require.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, mister.
Ricky, you want to add something? You're good. Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? I'll happily let anyone else speak if they would like to. Mr. Beckner, anybody? You're good? All right. Moving along. Okay, I'd like to go on to family partitions. The Lori B. Hoffman property, lots 4D1 and 4D2. Mr. Quipma.
Clint Quipma, representing WGA Quipma Surveyors, asking for Planning Commission approval on the Lori B. Hoffman family partition. We had two comments. One, first, meaning how many lots are being served by the 40-foot private servitude passage? And the comments, consultant added note that four users are serviced by the existing servitude of passage, which you can see right under the north arrow with the four signatures that will be required. The second comment as well is, also include 4E in the private dedication note, and response from the consulting agency, was consultant, added note the plot, lot 4E was previously dedicated, CPC file number 2349. Other than that, good to go.
All right, commissioners, have any questions?
Just out of curiosity, you have, on the south side of La Cooley Drive, you show pond, but it doesn't show the limits of the pond. How much of that, of the south half of lots 4D1 and 4D2 is pond?
Pond, the limits of the pond are dotted, if you can see it. It stretches to the extent of the drain of servitude right along that line, basically. Not exactly, but very close to the north 20-foot drain of servitude on the 32-foot top-of-bank ditch.
So there's really no buildable area on the south side of the road?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, is that correct?
Yes, correct, absolutely not, unless you were to fill in the pond, which I imagine would be cost prohibitive.
Okay, I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to discuss, have comments on this partition, please come forward. You'll have three minutes to talk. All right, no one wishing to come forward?
Okay, then I have a question. I was waiting to see if anybody was going to speak. I counted five mobile homes using the existing road, the existing private servitude.
Now, assuming we're not talking about 4A, because that's Highway 431.
Well, I counted, I counted the mobile homes accessing that servitude, which was five existing. So I'm wondering if...
I know there's one on lot 4E. There is one presently on 4D1. There is one on 4C. And appears to be a structure on 4B, although I don't know how many.
Okay, I counted five.
Okay, that's not, not on 4A?
No, I said accessing the servitude. And I'm wondering if the servitude is wide enough with that many homes already accessing the road?
We do have a note requesting that the, have a variance for the 40-foot, to remain 40-foot due to the fact of the encumbrances and the unique shape of the property. Essentially, widening that would ensure that no home could be built, essentially you would remain a trailer park, because that's all you could afford to put there if you intended to widen that road and squeeze that building space down to almost nothing.
I have one other question. From the west end of Lot 4A to Highway 431, how many of the lots are there?
4A fronts Highway 431. It is the first lot that fronts.
Well, then, then your graphic for your, well, like I said, it would be right, yeah, never mind. Okay, so 4A, so there's only, so there were originally only four lots in this family partition?
Four lots servicing La Cooley Road.
It's five trailers.
They could have, they could have, I don't know, family, the second one.
But I mean, five trailers are serviced by that passage, not four.
If we're talking about density, these are large lots, and so with the density requirement of the parish, you're allowed to put a family member on a lot as long as the density requirement is met.
I don't think our issue's the density, I think our issue's, and what he said was they're asking for a variance, but a variance is, you know, it's optional.
What is the size of lot 4B and 4C?
2.10 acres, 2.13 acres, being 4C. 4B is 2.10 acres.
Okay, you just got the hook lines here. What is the wish of the commission?
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, we put these restrictions, when we have the family partitions, they come to us, and we put these restrictions saying no more further division will be allowed. But this is how, we always wonder how are they, you know, how will they do it? We know they're going to do it, but this is how they do it. They put the variance on there, ask for the variance, and we give the variance, and they get further division of the lots.
What is the wish of the commission? I'm sorry? Yes, yeah.
Lots 4A, B, C, and D, were they created by way of a family partition?
Yes, they were. They're on reference number one.
Could you, could you speak up or speak into the mic?
Yes, they're reference number one, the one that refers to the PC number 2349. Would you like to take a look at it? I do have it with me.
And do these people all remain related?
Yes, these are family members, as you can tell, Lori B. Hoffman received the lot 4D, she received it in the family partition, and she is giving, she is retaining one lot, and giving a child the other lot with the house trailer.
Second reference, reference two, PC file 2926, was that where lot 4B, was that, looking at what I'm looking at on the plat you have, you're showing us right now?
Yes.
Yes, 4B and 4C. The way it looks compared to the way you have it drawn here, with those, because it looks like that was a lot and it was split, the way you have it drawn here on the plat you gave us tonight?
Okay, no.
So there's been no further resubs? What was the, what was the item of business handled on, in 2003? Was that the creation?
That is a, no, that is not this property, that is, that is a string of properties, probably where original, the original four was created, all along, let me see if I have that, I have a tax map. Let me see if I have that reference map with me.
Well, actually, five, right? A, B, C, D, and E.
No, we actually have to go kind of further back than that. Oftentimes, although a reference is added to the plat, it is, it is for control basis and the process of doing the survey. Here is that, like, this is actually not, this actually is another one. So this is the property, not of the property we're doing, so it is not, not that property, it is the lot three, nor, on the north property, so it's not a recent subdivision of this property, it's just a reference to how the survey was made.
All right, so let me ask you a question. How were lots 1, 2, 3, and 4 created? Was that done through a family partition?
Probably had adequate road frontage with those lots. If we look at the tax map, we can see lot 1 with adequate road frontage here, lot 2 having adequate road frontage here, lot 3 having adequate road frontage here, and lot 4 having adequate road frontage here, so that would probably have been done by a simple partition.
Were all of those done prior to the zoning code being in place? Let's see, 01...
When were they done? Oh, yeah, way before the current zoning, absolutely. Of course, you can see the earliest reference maps, 2001, would have been done before 2001. It was certainly done before the ordinance of the restricted seven lots.
Charles, when was that done? Restriction of seven lots, do you recall when that was done? Michael, are we seeing a historian?
I don't know. I honestly don't know. I'd like to, can I see the, can I see the plat that you've got there? There's a couple things, the one that you had showed to us, that one. Thank you. Okay, this, this was done in 2002. So, in fact, it was done, it was dated, 2/20/2002, so I just, I just come aboard. But it was adopted, it was accepted with the 40-foot private servitude of passage. So the question I've got now would be for legal counsel, as far as, since it was accepted with the 40-foot private servitude of passage then, would it still, that would still have to be accepted, wouldn't it, O'Neil?
Well, they're splitting property, so he's asking for a variance, what you'd wind up with is 40 feet, you're part of it, and then if you don't give him the variance, 50 feet to another part, so you have a perfect road anyway. Can't make him, you can't make him dedicate property, which is not part of this partition.
That's great.
But the servitude at that time was dedicated... But the, the servitude at that time was dedicated all the way, Lake Cooley Road is dedicated all the way back to?
4E.
4E.
So you have a 40-foot servitude of passage. He's dividing a lot, that last lot, and he's asking to allow it to maintain 40 feet rather than making it 50, because the only 50 would be for the two, for 4D1 and 4D2. It would not be for 4A, 4B, or 4C. Couldn't, couldn't make him do that. It's not the property involved here. So you can only affect the two lots with the servitude of passage anyway.
Okay. Let me ask you, um... I'm assuming that your plan of building the house is on the north side of Lake Cooley Road, correct?
They may, they may put a trailer and residences sometime, I'm sure.
I'm gonna be very candid with you. Here's what bothers me more than anything else about this, is that you're, you're legally creating two lots, but you're physically creating four. And what you're ending up with is really with a total of eight lots, physically creating eight lots rather than, rather than two.
Can you explain that to me?
Julio, you could not build on the south side of the road.
Well, because he's got a pond, but that doesn't mean somebody couldn't fill it.
No, they couldn't. No, it's all pond, and then there's a ditch, and then there's a body or something.
If somebody wanted to fill it in, it would be costly, but I mean, it could be done.
I don't know. Fill in the ditch? You can't fill in a ditch, you mean fill in a pond?
No, I'm talking about the pond.
Oh, yeah.
I can put the ditch note on there if you'd like, that it can't be tampered with or filled in, as we've been required to do in previous plats.
Well, I guess what I'm asking you is, are you prepared to put up, on the south side of Lake Cooley Road where you have that pond, you're prepared to put up, for lack of a term, the pond's acting like a part of the drainage system because water's flowing to it, correct?
No.
It's not?
No.
It's not connected to anything?
No, it's just like a pond in someone's backyard. It's not connected to the ditch. It's just like a regular pond.
See, that's my issue. You know, I mean, you know, it costs were never an issue. You could fill it up, and you'd physically have another lot.
No, it's very expensive to fill in a pond.
I, I'm not saying it isn't expensive, you know, forget dollars. I'm just saying that you've, that's, that's my issue. So, you know, I, I mean, I understand what you're doing. I, I don't know that you have very many other alternatives, except, you know, what I'd like for you to figure out a way to resolve is, is how do you prevent the southern half of these two lots, the southern, the portion of these two lots, south of Lake Cooley Road, from ever becoming a buildable area?
Why would you want to? I mean, why, why is that necessary?
Because then you have physically created four, eight lots on, well, actually, two, four, six, eight, 10 lots. You have the north half, and you have the south half. You're not following me, never mind.
Any property with a private servitude or passage going down the middle, you assumed is multiple lots? I mean, it's just two lots. That's all it is. It's 4D1 and 4D2. There's only two buildable spaces on the lot unless these people got packs of money in their pockets that can just fill a pond.
Maybe they don't, but somebody else will.
I don't, I don't understand how we can get four, eight, 10, 20, or 40 lots out of this. It's just two lots. It only has the smallest of building area on them.
Any other questions? Okay. What is the wish of the commission?
I'm gonna take a stab at him. I'm gonna make a motion to approve subject to the following conditions that must be placed on the plat. Condition number one, that there shall be no further subdivision of lots 4A through 4D2 inclusive, that the portion of the lots, 4D1, 4D2, south?
You can't restrict lots that are not before the commission.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Just the two lots. My, thank you, legal, my apologies. That the portion of the, of these two lots lying south of Lake Cooley Drive be designated at some non-buildable portions of the lot.
And are you gonna give him the waiver?
With the waiver.
I have a motion by Julio Dumas to approve with restrictions that no further re-subdividing or development on the south side be permitted.
A second.
Seconded by Paige Beckno. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, family partition of the Carl Stafford Estates lots A11A through A16.
My name's Deborah Wiltz, and I'm requesting a family partition be done of our property on Millie Road.
Is this your property?
Yes.
Okay.
All of these individuals are your relatives?
Yes, sir.
Who is Ms. Annie Masok?
I don't know.
You don't know who she is? Okay, because there was a note here that said that, about her signature.
On what? A note on what?
Well, our homework says that we should have her signature on the plat because she's the owner of the property. But are you saying she's not the owner of the property?
No, ma'am. I purchased it from Chris Becker.
Okay.
Last year.
Charles, do you know?
She owns the property that is across from us.
Okay. Did anyone mention that to you about getting her signature?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
And what would that be in reference to? To use the servitude?
Yeah, Millie, Millie Road.
Meaning the permission?
Yeah. The Millie Road, the Millie Road, the parish's, Millie Road is short of your property. So in order for you to connect it, you'll have to use a, you have to get a private servitude, you have to use a private servitude.
Correct.
That Ms. Masok has interest in. So you've got a gap that you've gotta, in order for you to get to the parish road. So you need her consent to do that.
I'm the surveyor, Phil Thomas, and the deal with that is, that had already existed to the bayou or to the canal. That was existing, and they said that we needed to get her permission. And our, my contention is that we have a public hearing. If she's against it, she need, you know, she can come and, you know, voice her, you know, for or against. But if we have to send it off for her signature, and what if she does, y'all approve it, she decides not to sign it? Then what do we do? You know, that's the whole deal. That's.
That should be signed before it's approved.
O'Neil, she would be required to sign it, right?
Is, who's, who is the right of passage dedicated to?
It's, it's just to get to the piece of property that she bought.
But is there a dedication somewhere?
In the transaction, when they bought the property, the attorney, we showed them a letter that they had that showed that they, it was dedicated all the way to the canal.
I bought my property with the right of passage.
Yeah.
What?
It ran with the property.
If there's a dedicated right of passage, it goes with the property.
Yeah, and that's what the deal is.
I don't know if there's a policy that would make everybody sign, but I don't understand. If it's a policy, it's a policy.
But what if she decides she ain't gonna sign it, and y'all approve?
Well, it could be approved subject to her signature, and if she doesn't wanna sign it, then that's a matter that y'all gonna have to deal with, with her. If you gotta file a mandate, Mr. Or, file a suit against it.
I mean, is that, is that like a stipulation?
It's a policy of our parish. It's a policy on using private rights of passage.
Even though it ran with the property that she acquired?
It's a policy that if you're gonna create more lots, she bought a piece of property, she owned one lot. You're not creating all these lots. All these people are gonna use that right of passage. It's a policy that we require.
Well, being it's a public hearing, if she was against it?
We have a policy.
I understand.
We're gonna follow the policy.
All right, all right.
That's, we're gonna follow the policy.
That's fine, that's fine. We'll get, we'll have her name on the thing if that'll prove it.
And she was sent, she was sent a notice from the hearing and all that?
Yeah, she, she knows, but this is their policy, so.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this property, please come forward, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
My name is Scott Peach, I'm one of the adjacent property owners directly, directly south.
Scott, we, sign in too. I mean, you can do it now or later, whichever.
I'll sign in.
Okay.
I'm sorry. And I don't know if I'd say I'm in opposition. My only concern is my watershed, my five acres flows directly to that. And I spoke to the people, and they're wonderful people, but I know they have to bring up their elevation a considerable amount for them to build on. And if they build up, that's gonna block off all my watershed going to Black Bayou. And there wasn't any maps on the internet whenever I received my notice, and I just spoke with my, you know, upcoming neighbors, and they gave me the map here, but, you know, it doesn't show any drainage plans whatsoever either. So that's my concern. I welcome the neighbors, I welcome the company, but I don't want my five acres to become a pond.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, public hearing is closed.
Charles, along the south end of this tract, south side of lots A, of proposed lots A1C and A1D, why would we not require a drainage servitude? But knowing, yeah, but knowing that the water flows from the south northward, wouldn't you wanna capture it and bring it around to the, to Black Bayou? No, 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 that's quite all right. The other issue that I have is that, you know, I, you need to provide some kind of a T-turnaround on, on this thing. You've got, you know, essentially six lots, and, you know, people going to those weird lots, you know, trying to maneuver, oops, went to the wrong, wrong place, having to turn around becomes difficult. So I think you need to provide at least a, a T-turnaround. But your plat doesn't show it. The end of the road, correct.
Ms. Witz? When I drove out and looked at this, I couldn't tell where the ditch was going across the property. Is there, I mean, the road ended at the existing house now. Is there, what are you gonna do to get over that ditch?
Oh, with a pipe or something.
Okay, so, okay, that'll, that'll be sufficient? Did I need a bridge, just a culvert?
Yeah, yeah. Exactly.
Any other comments, questions?
I'll move to approval subject to, um, the, the signature of Ann Masok being on the plat, the proposed servitude for, well, the street needs to be named, and the servitude of passage would need to be named, and, and that servitude of passage needs to include a T-turnaround that meets the standards of the parish development code. And I would go ahead and, and put that ditch running east-west along the south property line of the track to ensure that any drainage considerations are promptly addressed.
Okay, I have a motion by Julio Dumas to add the signature to the plat, proposed servitude of passage being named, and T-turnaround be added to the end of the servitude of passage in an east-west ditch.
In lieu of the T-turnaround, if they wanted a cul-de-sac?
That's fine. Either a cul-de-sac or T-turnaround that meets.
Yeah, whatever the effect that y'all require, that's, they want, they'd rather have that than the T.
I have a second. Second by Beverly Bari. Any opposition?
Opposed.
Or Sherry? Anyone else? Motion carries. Next item is a public hearing to consider the following traditional neighborhood development, Riverton Plantation, Phase One and Two. Greg?
Good evening. Greg Ferris, Principal with Ferris Engineering. We're asking for approval of the specific implementation plan for Phases One and Two of the Riverton Plantation TND. These two phases were taken right off of the general implementation plan that was approved by this body and by the council a few months back. There were several comments received from the planning staff as part of this supplemental. We received a letter saying that all of those were addressed. Touching briefly on the drainage, you may notice that it does not exactly agree with the concept plan. What we are planning is providing the drainage sufficient for these two filings, and of course, as future filings are built, we'll provide the drainage detention and whatnot for those future filings. But we have proven that these two filings stand alone as far as drainage is concerned. There was also some traffic improvements spelled out by the traffic impact study, most of them dealing with improvements to Highway 22 and the intersection of 22 and 44. We're committed to providing those, those improvements as needed, as necessary. And we'd be happy to answer any questions you have. We have the developer here tonight and the traffic engineer, and I think we can answer any questions you have.
You have only one exit and entrance into Riverton off of 22, that's it?
For Phase One and Phase Two, yes, ma'am. For future phases, there will be an extension to the north to provide a second entry and exit from the development, but it's, as shown in the traffic study, it's not warranted for the first two phases.
Greg, can you give us a status of, of how things are going to the north? Because, you know, that was a major issue on the original plan, and, and I know that there's... that there's a, uh, there's a new loop, uh, plan that affects what you're proposing to do, and it's sort of, I mean, I looked it up on the internet the other day, and maybe you could shed a little light on it for us.
Kind of a moving target. Um, I think, uh, the developer, Paul Brankton, can probably answer those questions a little bit better than I can. Be happy to have him up.
Hey, how y'all doing? If I could, I printed out some maps I wanted to give to y'all, kinda showing y'all what we're, um, what we're looking at or what we're talking about. And, um, also Edenborn, the other development that we're coordinating our efforts with, and I know some of y'all don't, haven't seen what Edenborn's doing, and so I was able to meet with him today and get some packets to show y'all what Edenborn is and where they're at as well.
Thank you.
Y'all ready?
Yep.
Has everybody orientated themselves with the map, the, the first map?
Yeah, yes.
We have several avenues we're looking at. We're meeting, like we told y'all in the last meeting, we've been meeting with the parish and with Edenborn, who is the development we put in on this map, and also that book I gave you, that's gonna come on the corner of 44 and the interstate. And we've been coordinating our efforts with them as well as with Ascension Parish to figure out the best place to coordinate this road to bring over to St. Landry Road, which will be, uh, our connect, connection point. The big dotted line you see going through here is one of the, right now, that, that so far seems to be the best route, where we actually go into Edenborn, where they have a roundabout, and then we have a road that comes all the way across in between and hits St. Landry Road in between Lamar Dixon and, uh, Highway 30. The smaller dotted lines is all the other routes that we've also been discussing with the parish and with Edenborn as well, and at this point, we still haven't pinpointed, uh, the first meeting, but I want to point out is, I was talking about coming through the Delpit Evans property at the end of St. Landry Road for our connectivity. After talking with the parish, they'd rather us not do that because the road is so narrow, they don't wanna have to do the improvements, and the roads improved up closer to Lamar Dixon, so they would rather see the connectivity with us and Edenborn connect somewhere close to Lamar Dixon or between Lamar Dixon and Highway 30. So, right now, we're still in discussions and coordinating our efforts with the parish. What I also did is, I don't know if y'all are familiar with the proposal on the loop, so I went ahead and printed this off the, the website, the proposed loop around Baton Rouge, and if you'll look, in yellow is the potential corridor, and all the ones you see in red are the ones that are eliminated corridors. The yellow, if, it's kinda hard to see, you have to look close, but it comes around Lamar Dixon and actually comes right above the airport property and runs the south side of Edenborn and actually crosses 44 and ties in by the old rest stop area, uh, between, uh, Highway 44 and, uh, 22 in Sorrento. So, we've also been in discussions with the parish, who's been involved with the loop, so I just kinda wanted to bring y'all up to date on everything we've been discussing, talking about, and where we're at.
Well, no, because...
No, I know it doesn't.
Yeah.
I wish I had something more definitive to tell you.
How do we know when it's gonna change? If this loop is ever gonna be built, or not anytime soon?
We're not, that, that's why I'm showing you the first map, because we're not banking on the loop at all. Uh, the avenues you see on the first map are the avenues that us, the parish, and Edenborn are coordinating. We're not even, that loop might not happen for 10 or 20 years, so we're not banking on that. I just wanted to be able to show y'all that because that's come up in our discussions in coordinating with the parish and Edenborn. That's the only reason I even made a copy of that for you. The routes you're seeing here on the, the red map are what us, Edenborn, and the parish have been discussing on the possible avenues.
So you haven't acquired any right-ofways yet?
Uh, no, ma'am, we haven't. We've talked to some of the property owners, which I had also mentioned in, in the first meeting as well. Uh, Sid Marshan, uh, represents the people that own majority of the property in this area above the airport, in between, uh, St. Landry Road and, and there's other property owners on St. Landry Road, but that big empty area you see in the middle, which we have spoken with those people, and they are interested in, in donating right-ofway with us. That is in place. Uh, it's not in place in writing, I mean, that's from, per discussion. Um, also, of course, Delpit Evans at the bottom, which really, at this point, is kinda irrelevant because the parish doesn't want it down there. They, they want it up, up closer, and we're kinda, I don't wanna say in limbo, we're discussing and meeting, but we haven't pinpointed the exact route yet. And just so you know, also, uh, I talked with the developer of Edenborn, Bill Clark, who was in town today, and I had let him know that most of y'all aren't familiar with his project because y'all haven't seen it, that's been in front of Gonzalez. He said that if y'all wanna schedule something, he doesn't have a problem flying in and doing a presentation on his project to y'all, because in his project, he's got the same thing, he has to have connectivity with us to St. Landry, and they'll probably get started before we will on their project. So he's pushing the road as hard as I am, you know, with the parish to try and have that joint effort.
It's just that, that area seems to be on the, on the men, I mean, the growth is in that area, and you only have those two-lane highways, 44 and 22, and the traffic is horrible now. What will it be when those two large developments come on board?
I'm, I'm gonna tell you this, this is not the answer, because we will be connecting to St. Landry Road, okay? Cause that's what we want, that's what they want, and that's what the parish wants. But one thing we are gonna have that will be pretty definite, you see how the big dotted line goes into Edenborn? That's a boulevard from Edenborn that goes straight out to 44 by the interstate. Uh, we will definitely have that connectivity. Uh, the right-ofway in between us is Sid Marshan's client, uh, in, I mean, the land in between us above the airport property and Eden, and butts up to Edenborn property is Sid Marshan's client, which they've already agreed on the right-ofway for that part, i-if we, if that's the route we actually gonna do. And we'll definitely have that until we get it resolved, how to get to St. Landry with the parish and where the parish wants connectivity at.
That connection on 44 is actually north of the bridge, correct? Which is where it's four lanes?
Uh, yeah, um, no. That connection, they're on, uh, they're on the south side of Interstate Bridge.
No, not the Interstate Bridge, I'm talking about that li, the, the little bridge that goes over the bayou.
Oh, yes, yes.
It's north of the Pan, um, north of...
Panama Canal?
Panama Canal.
Yes, it is, it's actually...
No, this is the Panama Canal.
They're actually right there on the corner of the interstate and 44.
Panama Canal down here, I'm talking about...
The one in Conway?
Is that Conway? It's not there? It's also Panama Canal? Okay.
Paul, when you say that's what the parish wants, who are you referring to?
Uh, Tommy Martinez, Kent Scheck Snyder, uh, the main ones we've been meeting with and talking to.
But not, not necessarily Bob Turner, you know, our staff, or, you know?
Uh, not on coordinating the road, I haven't been there.
Okay.
At some point, you need to, you need to involve them.
Right.
Uh, we had, uh, when we initially got our approval and we're going, I mean, we kinda briefed them on what we were looking at doing and how we wanted connectivity, uh, just and, and maybe we need to start trying to get them in some of the meetings when we have meetings to, to discuss it. Uh, we just haven't, we haven't done that, but we, I'll, I'll make a point to make that happen.
Any other questions or comments at this time?
I've got a question concerning, um, concerning the boulevards.
Okay.
Um, each boulevard section indicates one travel lane being provided both sides of the median, and the space reserved for one additional lane on each side of the median to be built by the parish in the future. Uh, I, I'm a little concerned with that because why should the parish go ahead and make the improvements? This is your development, and I don't see you necessarily building this thing out, uh, before you may need that.
The, well, if, and I don't know if you remember or not, in the October meeting, that was brought up and discussed. Steve Wu, when he was going through the presentation, was explaining how we're gonna have a four-lane boulevard through the development, and Mr. Sanji brought up that according to the plans we submitted, there was only two lanes and a boulevard. And that's when we explained that we're putting two lanes and a boulevard through the development, we're leaving a right-ofway that in the future, if the parish had wanted to expand that to a four-road, they had the right to do that because that right-ofway would be in place, but we're not forcing them to do anything. Um, I can tell you, Mr. Marshan, you know, each, each phase, as we get approved, and we have a traffic impact study, the improvements that are dictated to us that need to be done, we're gonna do per phase to make sure the, the traffic, uh, is correct, according to our traffic impact study.
So essentially, what you're saying is, is that six years from now, you're doing Phase 5, and traffic study deems that you need to have four lanes, it becomes your obligation, so be it.
If, when it dictates that, we will, you know, um, Ms. Dumas, besides our development too, this, I mean, we're looking at a 10- to 12-year build-out at least on, on this development, you know, there could be other developments that come up in between or other, the other things that could affect our traffic impact study, and we're just trying to plan ahead is what we're trying to do.
I guess the biggest concern with the term by others is that it implies that there's a, there's an obligatory commitment, you know, by the parish to do it in the future, where we really don't know that answer today. It could be that another developer has to do it, it could be that you have to do it as a result of traffic studies.
That's correct.
So it'd probably be, it'd probably be best if you just, if you just simply showed the two lanes and the right-ofway for the four lanes, and the, by others be taken out because you don't know who others may be.
I, I agree with that. We can definitely do that.
Okay, if there's no other comments or questions at this time, I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on this project, please come forward, sign your name, and you'll have three minutes to speak. I know no one wishing to, to speak, public hearing is closed. Comments or questions from commissioners?
Wait before you make a motion.
I'm not gonna make a motion, I'm gonna ask some questions.
Okay.
Greg, can you, any... I, I guess the staff report kinda indicates that there's some confusion over the, over the, over the utilities, particularly in the boulevard. You know, if, if my memory serves me right, when you guys left here and went to the, the parish council as part of all of your approvals, you guys actually created a community development district, correct?
Yes, sir.
So... I'm sorry, Mr. Maranko?
I was just gonna get up here.
The CDD is more...
So, so you guys created a, a, a CDD?
That's correct.
That's a quasi-public, public facility. Are they the ones that are gonna own, obviously not the boulevard, but are they the ones that are gonna own the sewer and, and, and obviously Baton Rouge Water's gonna own the water, but...
Yes, that's correct.
Don't own the, the rest of utilities?
Yes, uh, well, not all the utilities.
Well, but, you know, sewer.
Well, it's water will be Baton Rouge water.
That's right, no, not electric or telephone.
Right, and, um... You know, so you're, you know, so the CDD would own that, there'd be a quasi-public, and, and they would not have an issue with granting the parish an indemnity on maintenance of the road should something happen with utilities?
That's correct. I've also spoken with Baton Rouge Water and the other utility companies, and that's one thing we, we will do, any main trunk line or utility that is in the right-ofway, we're gonna make sure in that contract, there's an indemnity clause where anything that's caused any damage, they of course have to repair and they're responsible for.
And you'd be prepared to do that, same with gas company and...
That's correct, that's all utilities.
Ricky, is that the procedure you're used to? I know you've done more of these over in Florida than we have.
Correct. The, the CDD sort of maintains that authority.
So really, there's no, there's no major change here? Uh, you know, basically, I mean, I know when I looked at the plan, I, it didn't say utilities, but looking at the cross-section, it's like, I guess, my background, normal customary way of doing it on a narrow right-ofway like that.
The, the major change is, in the previous semitle, the utilities were shown in the alleys, in this semitle, they're shown in the right-ofway. We just wanted there to be clarification that it's understood that they will be in a right-ofway.
Okay. Alright, I'm sorry, I, that's the bulk of my question.
Okay, I just, I just had an easy one. What happened to the round and round?
The roundabout?
Yeah.
We, we're still planning on doing the roundabout.
Are you?
Uh, the traffic impact study for first and second phase, um, just showed turning lanes, it didn't show the roundabout. One of the things Greg and I are working on now is, uh, laying the roundabout out, of course, so when we add the turn-in lanes, it, it goes right in with the roundabout, and, and it's done the right way.
Okay.
So that's something they're working on as we speak.
Okay. It looks different now, so I just didn't know if y'all had not gotten approval, or, you know, just what happened?
We're going to meet with the state, uh, following this, actually.
Okay.
That's the next step.
I have a question. Where is all your green space for kids to play? Where's the ball park?
If you, um, if you look, if you look around, well, I'll go ahead, Greg.
I mean, it's laid out, we actually, as part of the, um, requirements of the planning staff, we, we broke out the first and second phases and provided plenty of green space to, to conform to the ordinance. So it is there, it's spaced out, uh, along the roads, there are, there are green areas, including the, the bio swell, as we call it, um, along the western portion of the property.
If you look behind where, where like the school's going, and you'll see both lakes, uh, you know, as you remember, we have no houses on the lake, it'll be parks around the lakes, it'll also be parks, uh, that bio swell area that runs between lake to lake, well, it will also be a park-like setting or a park as well, on the first couple, on the first couple of phases.
Is there anything else you wanna add, Ricky?
Our lots 76th through 288, they're backing up to Lake A, that's not, I mean, those are lots backing up to a lake, correct?
Where are you?
They're adjacent to the lake, but there are plans for some green, uh, improvements to be made, such as walking trails along the, along the, the pond to invite the whole development to enjoy the pond, it's not just for those lakes, the lots that are, that border the lake.
Is the solid line the top of bank?
That's correct.
So what's the difference from top of bank to back of line?
About 20, 25 feet.
How much of that is sloped?
I don't know that right offhand, but there's, there's plenty of space to provide a, a walking trail there, as, as well as landscaping and whatnot.
So what's the, the, the distance between Track S and your property line?
In the neighborhood of 100, 110 feet.
And, and basically, that's the park for this phase?
Well, I think they're all interconnected, it's no one park, except Lake A, which is a considerable size, will have walking trails... It's no one park, except Lake A, which is considerable size, will have walking trails around it.
I, I think the question was, where do you go throw the football with your kid? Or you go hit the baseball with your kid? Is it that 100-foot space between these two ponds? With a ditch running through the middle?
There's also some, some area towards the, towards the north, which we show as track CS1 common area. That'll be future, future detention area, but it is counted as green space at this time.
That's on the backside by the second.
But it's going to be taking, taken away later as a detention pond?
And other green space provided. Again, we're trying to balance the, the phases as we go. On, on sheet two of ten, we, we provide the breakdown with the green space.
I saw that, but I still, I'm just not satisfied with what I'm seeing.
And is a football field required?
A football field's not required, but green space is enough for families to, as we said, throw a football.
Frisbee? You know, it, it, I think that the intent of the code is to spread parks throughout, and it's not to provide walking trails around ponds and connections between those ponds that's 100 feet wide. Alley parks are nice, but they shouldn't be the only parks. And calling a park a park and then saying that tomorrow, we're going to turn it into a pond doesn't count, and wetlands don't count. They're upland play spaces within a T and D development. That creates the place.
There's also a track CS4, which is kind of hard to read the lot numbers, lots 3, 308, 327. There's a common area there that's pretty good size, which is going to be green area.
Which, where, where are you?
On sheet 5A.
No, I, I got it. Okay.
What is track CS4 designated as?
Common area. Common area is all I'm saying.
Also, if you, Paige, if you, you look on the, the first detention pond or lake, um, on, on the?
Lake A?
Yes.
Lake A. I mean, I know on that particular lake, you know, the north side of it, how much land is between, going to be between that lake and, and the end of the property line over there? Do we have a layout on that?
The same, 25 to 30 feet, plus there's a, an energy servitude over there, which is, which is very important.
Yeah, that's, okay.
I got a question for you. Can you put the lake, can you put part of the lake underneath the energy servitude?
We can ask them. Sometimes they allow it, sometimes they don't. It is a transmission line, so it would be up to them to, to allow it or not allow it. Right now, we're providing it all outside of the servitude. That's something we could certainly approach them with.
You know, I'm just thinking that, if there's any way that you can do that, I'd rather you have the opportunity to reclaim that property for retention and, and afford, afford larger recreational tracks for the residents.
Okay.
You know, um, because, you know, right now, you know, that's just going to end up as a big weed patch on the backside of the lake. So I, you know, if you can do that, that'd be great, and, uh, you know, I can tell you that from experience, that's been done.
Sure.
Is staff satisfied with this, or you still have some questions? Ricky and Mr. Becknow?
You know, I just, I just want to confirm that as we move into future phases, regardless of what happens here today, that the understanding is upland open space is what we're looking for. And when I look at the book of what was previously submitted, that wetland is an upland open space. And so I want to just make sure the point is made. We're going to require upland open space, and it needs to be suitable for recreation. It's not a walking trail. It's a recreation area.
There's also a track CS2 that's a common area that's, uh, shown right here in the middle of the commercial area, about halfway through the boulevard, which is a sizable green space, which, which will be there in perpetuity. Plenty of room to throw a football there.
That's supposed to be like a town square, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? And what is the wish of the commission, please?
All right, you know, Paul, I, I'd like for you to commit to the commission that you'll explore that Florida pond like, that's a large track line that you could recoup and really do something nice behind the homes. Even if you just recoup some of it, you can make that linear park behind the homes, you know, maybe 50 feet wide, even if you recoup enough scallops into that area where you can, where you can do something to make that. And, and if you can make that commitment to the commission, that you'll look at that and you'll, you'll bring that to us in the future, in future phases. You know, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve, um, the specific development plan for Phase, um, one and two.
Yeah, we'll make that commitment if they'll allow us, I mean, we'll move that over if they'll let us do that, and, uh, you know, we want as much park area as possible as well.
Before anybody seconds, Charles had had a comment in here about asking for counsel, a recommendation to the council, and I'm, I'm not sure I was clear on that, but did you see that?
Yes.
I think the approval was contingent upon these issues going to council for approval. Am I correct, Charles?
No, I didn't put that in my, in my motion. I, I was just simply making a motion for approval.
Okay.
You know, I, you know, I, you know, the major change to add the utilities on, on, on the boulevard, to me, I, I guess, you know, maybe in my mind, I always thought that we're going to be there because I looked at those right-of-ways on the book, and, you know, there's just, they weren't that wide. They weren't even that wide. So there were no place, house for them to be. So I guess I basically, maybe I made a mistake. I, I made the assumption based on experience, so I don't see it as a major issue. So I was making, I, I, you know, that's my motion. I don't.
Well, again, before there's a second, I think I'd like to know why Charles put that in there, why he asked for it. Would this go, is this a recommendation, the motion is a recommendation to the council, or the motion is?
Well. The staff is recommending that if you do approve this, that you send this one item as far as the council carries with the utilities being located within the right-of-way, also about the widening of the street, just so that they are fully aware and they can go with this.
But the widening of the, but if I understood what we just went through, the widening of the street is not an issue because they're taking out the obligation, the parish do it. So that's gone away.
Well.
But staff, if, if our discussions, my understanding was that the big concern was the possibility that the parish would be obligated to maintain the road in the event a, a utility failed, but that if you had the indemnity, that wasn't the issue any longer.
But we did require, and we did suggest that this indemnity be part of, you know, we would, uh, they have utilities in the right-of-way.
Oh, okay. Well, in that, okay, I'm sorry. Then I, then I stand corrected. Then let me amend my, my motion. Then I would make a motion that we approve the, the specific development plan, Phase One, Phase Two, subject to the developer entering into appropriate in, in a, an indemnity that's acceptable to a sentient parish to ensure that the parish will not be responsible to maintain roads should any utility cause damage to the road. Does that make sense? And that, and, and any agreement, any development agreement like that would eventually go to the parish council, correct?
And, and the parish will not, taking out "and others" under the road?
Oh, yeah, no, that's, that's taking off. The "by others" is going off the plans.
That's correct.
Yes. Thank you. I accept that amendment to commission, to, to the motion. Thank you.
Okay, I'll second.
Sherry? Okay, we have a motion by Julio Dumas. I don't know if I need to go through all that again, but the developer will enter conversation with energy to try and obtain extra green space for the development. Also, the proposed development will go before the parish to make sure the parish is not in any way liable for utilities within the development. Is that correct, Charles?
Pretty much, okay.
And then the "by others" will take it off the plan. This is for Phase One and Phase Two. Any opposition? Motion carries.
When will you be starting all of this?
Don't know yet. We haven't even put it out for bid or done it. We wanted to make sure we had the approval and had the right final plot, and then we'll start talking to all the contractors and getting our bids.
You'll be updating us periodically?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, public hearing granting final approval to the following subdivisions. Cornerstone. Yes, sir.
Jeff Cook with GWS Engineering, and we're here requesting approval of the final plat of Cornerstone. Continued upon completing the punch list items. A file inspection has been conducted, and there are a few items left, and they're addressing those now.
What are, what are the items?
There's three items. Provide erosion, some additional erosion control near some drainage structures. Provide additional riprap around another structure and asphalt core testing.
Has that fence been constructed?
The fence has been constructed.
What, what about the manhole at the end? Is, you know, is that in the punch list as well?
At the end of the T-turnaround? There's a huge manhole. When I wrote out, there's a hu, man, ah, huge manhole that has not been covered, other than with a piece of plywood.
That is the pump station.
Okay.
That Tom Purkett comes in after, it was a private pump station, private utility. He comes in and puts the guts in and the top on top of that.
And when?
It's not a public improvement. It was a private improvement.
When will that be completed?
I haven't talked to Tom. Typically, it's shortly after approval of the final plat.
Does the health department come inspect that, or does the parish inspect it in any way?
Neither one due to my knowledge. It's a private utility. He owns it. He's liable for it. Just like the water company, just like GSU or Entergy.
Is there any way to secure that, that plywood on top better than where?
We can do that, and we can make sure that that's done. Yes, we can do that.
Someone could fall in there, a child, very easily.
Yeah, I haven't seen it personally, but yeah, if, if that's an issue, we definitely need to address that.
Well, let me, let me ask the building official to address that, if you may, please.
Yeah, I, I'll give you the help with that. We, we will give permits for building after the final plat has been approved, and all contingencies on the inspections have been done for the subdivision to be bonded, the road system, that is. Then when building permits are issued, certificates of occupies, occupancies will not be issued until a sewer plant is commissioned by the state DHH. And we get that through our local sanitaryian here in, in town. So that has to be completed before an occupancy can be issued, although I understand there could be a condition of safety if there's not covered properly at the time.
Right, and that's, I guess that our, our main concern is a, is a public safety issue.
Public safety, definitely. A child could have pushed, could easily push that plywood.
And we could convey that to our subdivision inspectors to address that to Mr. Tom and get that taken care of.
Yeah, we would appreciate that. I think, I think we need to have a means of securing that so that?
Definitely.
And the developer certainly doesn't want liability either, so we'll bring that to his attention.
At what point do you install streetlights and fire hydrants?
The power company actually does that, and they do that once the final plats are approved, and they have the servitudes and right-of-ways to put their services in.
Any other comments or questions by commissioners? At this time, I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on this development, please come forward. You'll have three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak? Public hearing is closed. Any other comments or questions?
Did you say that the final inspection had been made?
Yes, ma'am.
And the punch item list had been addressed?
They're currently addressing those punch item lists.
Okay. Can I make a, I'm sorry.
Go.
You ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
I'll make a motion to approve on contingent that all punch item lists are addressed.
I'd ask that you also request that they secure that.
Oh, yes, and also that you secure that, that manhole. A second, if that's what you call it.
Motion by Paige Becknow, seconded by Beverly Barre for approval with the condition that the manhole is secured. Any opposition? Motion carries. Next subdivision for final approval is Pelican Crossing, second filing.
Good evening. Mickey Robertson with SJB Group. Uh, we're here tonight to ask for approval of the final plat for the second filing of Pelican Crossing. It's the next 126 lots out of it. We have 207 lots approved on our final plat, and we're just asking for approval of the second filing.
I went out there on Saturday afternoon, and I saw a lot of work still being done there, and I couldn't get in, I couldn't go around to all the, the streets. So how can you say that that's ready for a final?
A lot of work has been done in the last four or five days. It's been, uh, everything was cleaned up as of this morning. We tried to have a final inspection earlier in the week, earlier this week, and the, the parish wasn't able to schedule it, so we're going to have that final inspection in the morning, but all work is complete to me.
But you don't know if it's going to be accepted by the parish, maybe?
There possibly will be punch list items, but we're certainly asking for approval contingent upon addressing the punch list item, and there certainly could be some items.
Any other questions at this time? If not, I'll open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this development, please come forward. Okay, no one wishing to speak? Public hearing is closed. Any other comments or questions? Okay, no other comments or questions? What is the wish of the commission?
Make a motion to approve pending, uh, final inspection and all punch list items being addressed.
Second.
Have a motion by Steve Barrow, seconded by Julio Dumas, for approval pending final inspection and subsequent addressing of all punch list items. Any opposition? Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Oak Heritage Townhomes.
My name is Norris Decatou. I'm with Flight Engineering Services. We submitted the final plat. This is a private townhome development that was approved in... This is a private townhome development that was approved in November of 2006, and we've completed the construction, except for the utilities and the final grading. And so, we're asking for final plat approval. I've addressed all of the comments from the staff and from the engineering department. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
Mr. Decatoo?
Yes, ma'am.
Were you going to put up a fence?
Yes, ma'am. We were going to start today, but because of rain-
You got me out.
It's going to take us about a week to get the fence up.
Are you going all the way around, or which sides are you doing the fence on?
We're going to do the south, White Road, and the north.
Okay.
And then, of course, in the front, we're going to have a gated community, so it'll be landscaped and probably a see-through type fence.
Okay.
When we were out there Monday, the sewer lift station, that was all open and everything. Have you secured that yet?
Yes, ma'am. We have the same problem that the previous guys had. We have the same guy that puts in the sewer systems. So, we'll make sure that those, we have three of them, and we'll make sure that they're secured and put some fencing around it to make sure nobody falls in there. We're just as concerned about it as you are, really.
Yeah, that looks like a hazard.
That's funny, we just noticed two this month where we really haven't noticed it before.
No, that they were always-
Well, this is our fourth project with, in the parish, and what happens is kind of like the previous engineer explained. We're at the point right now where as soon as we get the plat approved, we have our utility servitudes in place, then we let the utility companies go in since we have utilities, servitudes, and then that's after the water and the gas and the electricity is put in. Then Mr. Purkwe comes in, he puts in all of his lift station electrical and installs a sewer treatment plant. And that's usually done long after all the other utilities are put in.
But you can, you're selling lots, and people can start building, is that correct?
They can start building, but they can't occupy, like, you know, what it is, you get a permit to build, but you cannot occupy it until everything is completed. And you get the letter, of course, from DHH, and they do inspect it.
Any other comments or questions? At this time, I'll open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. You'll have three minutes. Okay, no one wishing to speak? Public hearing is closed. Any other comments or questions? What is the wish of the commission?
I make a motion to approve contingent that all your punch item lists are made, and that you do secure those three manholes and the fences up.
Second.
Got a motion by Paige Becknell, seconded by Don Grant for approval pending all punch list items and securing the manhole.
And the fence.
And the fence, thank you.
We stipulated that in our, in our last amendment.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Pelican Point, 13th filing.
Greg Ferris, Ferris Engineering. This is similar to the last project. Construction is substantially complete. Final inspection has been held, and we're addressing the punch list items as we speak, and we ask for your approval contingent on those punch list items.
What were those punch list items?
I don't know right offhand. They were very minor. I don't have that list in front of me, I'm afraid.
On your map, you have the street name is Green Tree Avenue, and on the, on the street sign, it says Herring's Way. What is the correct name?
Green Tree Avenue. I'll have to replace the sign.
And when will you be installing streetlights and fire hydrants? I have a stickler for that.
That'll be next. As soon as, as soon as construction is complete and it's signed off on by the parish, then the utilities will come in immediately afterwards.
But you're, the first section of Orchid Place, they still don't have streetlights and fire hydrants, and that's been approved at least six to eight months ago.
I'm not aware of that.
You should be.
That's, that's a developer issue. I mean, after, after the fact, it should be, yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm Brandon Gotor. I'm a consultant for the developer. I can speak to that. All the contracts with the utility companies are in and in place for the filing that you speak of. There was a small issue with the design from Energy in that per the plat that Energy received for that filing and the plat that was actually recorded, we removed one lot in order to make a section of lots a little wider, so it threw off their design, and they didn't notice it until they just received the final plat. So, Energy had to go back and redesign basically a section of their layout for that particular filing. So, the latest word from Energy is that they will be in there installing within the next two weeks, but all the utility companies have been paid by Pelican Point Properties. So, we're basically waiting on them to install the services.
And the fire hydrants?
Fire hydrants will go in with the water service. Water company has been paid.
Because I see in the oldest section of Pelican Point, you're just now installing fire hydrants.
I'm not sure if I can comment on that specifically. Those older sections were in place before, and this goes way back, before Baton Rouge Water or Ascension Water had any stake in that development. They were fed by private wells, and at the time, were not required to have hydrants on those lines. So, this is an ongoing issue with, with the parish and the water company for those older filings.
That just seems unsafe to me.
I agree.
Greg, did y'all do all of Pelican Point?
Not all of it, a majority of it.
Yeah, I didn't think, so we can't really, we can't really assume that y'all know everything that's going on out there because you didn't do the whole thing.
That's right. There are filings sprinkled in there that we did not do.
Right, okay.
Any other comments at this time or questions? If not, open the floor for public hearing. No one wishing to speak? Public hearing is closed. Any final questions or comments? What is the wish of the commission?
Make a motion to approve subject to satisfying all punch list items and final approval by Department of Public Works. And replace the street sign. Thank you.
A second.
A motion by Julio Dumas, seconded by Paige Becknell.
Nope, nope, nope.
Sherry. So much familiar. For approval pending punch list completion and changing the street sign. Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public hearing to consider following servitude revocation to Plessus Property, Lot EB2A.
Ellen Jackson with McLean and Associates, asking for this servitude to be revoked. We've gotten all the letters from the utility companies that are servicing this area. There are no objections, so we're asking for your approval.
How wide is this proposed drainage and access servitude?
Seventeen feet.
How can we have a drainage and an access servitude? Seventeen feet. If it's drainage, how are you going to use it as an access servitude?
Well, if they were to pipe it, they could use it as a driveway, but it's mainly a drainage servitude.
Obviously, you can have an access servitude that's a drainage servitude. Unless, unless you went back to the drainage board and got authority to do that, I don't see if you can do that.
Well, it'd just be drainage servitude.
Drainage, just, you don't have any opposition to that.
Well, but, but let me point out to you that our staff report here says no objection to revocating of the existing 15-foot servitude along the rear and replace it with a wider and longer adjacent servitude. So, they're looking to get all 17 feet as a drainage servitude.
That's what they're getting.
But how can it be a driveway?
If you were to pipe a ditch, you can actually drive across it. But if you want me to remove the access servitude, I can. They just want that for drainage, so.
Ellen? The access matter, it meets with the drainage board's request, it's just a-
Well, Neil, if, if they're willing to go ahead, Ellen's willing to go ahead. She's untold us twice. She's willing to remove the access and just be a proposed drainage servitude. So, let's, let's go with that then. That should simplify everything. And what would be approved would be a new drainage servitude, and that's it. Public meeting. With your agenda.
Oh, that's right. All right. I make a motion to approve, to recommend approval subject to labeling the width of this, of this tract of land, removing reference to access, and simply labeling it as a proposed drainage servitude.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion to approve and revise it to make it a drainage servitude, take the access off.
All right, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I just had a point of clarification. My agenda says public hearing. Is it a public meeting? Is it a public hearing or public meeting?
It says public hearing.
It said public hearing?
Yes.
Because it had public meeting on something on there.
All right, so we need to-
Maybe it had public hearing, yes. Hang on for that, the motion. Let me open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on this item on the agenda, please come forward. No one wishing to speak? Public hearing is closed. Now you're in order.
All right, let me, then restate my motion. I'll make a motion to recommend approval subject to the applicant amending its survey to designate the dimension, the width dimension of the proposed servitude, remove any access, any reference to access on the servitude, and that it be dedicated, that the subject servitude be dedicated for the exclusive use of drainage.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Julio Dumas to approve for the modification of the word "access" being taken off of the map and it be rededicated as a drainage servitude. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, a public hearing to grant approval of following simple divisions and versus Charlene Kramer Property Tracks A1A1 and A1A2.
Okay. We're asking to subdivide Track A1A into two tracks. A forty-foot servitude of passage. There were no comments from the consulting agency.
The rear, the rear 15-foot servitude, is that a, is that required drainage servitude staff?
It's existing.
I know it's existing, but is that, that would be what would not, what would have been required at the time the original subdivision was done? That would have been the required drainage servitude, correct? All right, there must not be any drainage structures out there, like soil or ditch or anything?
No, just a little ditch along the private servitude, that, with access, that's all.
Who lives in Track A1B?
Marilyn and Michelle.
Reason why I'm asking is that shed is on the property line.
It is. It was there when the planning commission approved the original family partition of the Kramer. Show you that. An encroachment here, an encroachment here, and the mobile home has been moved.
Right. Okay.
So, this was originally a family partition?
It's an existing property line. I can't move it. I mean, it's not a line that I'm creating.
I understand that, but are they going to move this shed, or is that okay with them? Is this the same family, I guess is what I'm asking?
Client's telling me it's going to be taken down at some point.
Both sheds or just one? Which one? The one on the south side?
The one closest to the road or farthest away.
The one that's closest to the servitude.
Yeah.
What about that corrugated shed building or whatever it is that's on the, on the fence line? Is that going to stay up?
This one here?
Both of these sheds were out, were up when I went out there.
When I did the survey, they were there. That's why I shouldn't-
So, when, when were they removed?
When was one of them removed?
Three weeks, two, a month ago. One of them was moved, so there's more servitude. The other one's closest to the front of the property line, still there.
The access servitude, the road? Yeah.
Okay, the front one?
Yeah, so this one.
Okay, the one he's showing. Oh, okay, I see.
No, that one's still there.
That one's still there.
The one over by the road to your-
To your left.
That one.
The trailer.
It's gone.
Yeah, the trailer's gone.
Yeah, the mobile home's gone. That's why I don't show it on my plat.
Yeah, the mobile home's been gone.
Yeah.
We're asking about the sheds.
All right, if I may, Mr. Chair, could you have your client come up and point to the plat drawing and show which ones gone?
These three are still there. I was there Monday when we went out.
This shed is still here, but it will be torn down in future. This shed has been taken down with the landlord purchase of this building, and she put it on the front of this property, but it's front of the property line.
Okay.
It's on her property. It's not, you know, crossing that property.
Is that that green shed?
That green shed is gone. That was the old green tin shed.
Uh-huh.
It's gone. We took that down. And we've just got a little lot.
Monday?
Building she bought from Lowe's and put up there.
Monday. We were out there Monday, and that green shed was still there.
I think we're just saying-
I think what you're saying, you tore it down, and they have a new shed there that's not encroaching.
Okay.
By the time the survey was done, it was theirs. I didn't show it.
The shed here is still here, all the way against the back property line, which would be the...
Is that that corrugated beige corrugated one?
No, it's made out of pine boards.
Just the one closest to the mobile home park.
Well, it was Carolyn, but it's not. Wayne Corville's trailer park. It's still there.
But you do plan to remove it, if you just see it correct.
Yeah, I have a great new plan and fix move.
We'll be happy to put "to be removed" on there.
Now, this was originally a family partition?
Yes, this was done by Earl's and...
What's the total number of lots of the subdivision now?
I can read the description of the map that I used to do my survey, which refers to his title, and that's the family partitions of the re-subdivisions of track A1 and A2, and to track A1A, A1B, and A2A. That's the map I used to do my survey. Says one, two, three, four, five lots showing right here. A2, A2A.
Mr. Earl, the shed in A1A2, it's in the servitude. You do understand that if the parish needs to get into that servitude, that has to be moved?
I'm just going to look at this one here.
It doesn't have to be moved now, but if the parish needs to get to that servitude for some reason...
Yeah, it could be removed.
It doesn't have to right now. What I'm saying is...
If they need to, yeah.
I just want to make sure that you understand that that would have to come down at your cost.
Okay. Staff? We start off with a family partition creates X number of lots. One of the lots gets subdivided by means of a simple subdivision or another family partition. How do we track the total cumulative lots from that initial parcel to make sure that we don't exceed the threshold for a community sewer? Just as a sidebar, I think as part of these applications, I think we need to have the parent track and all subsequent subdivisions, so we can see the total number of lots.
Back to what date?
To when lot A, B, C, and D were created.
And what methodology? Simple partition or family partition?
I think the threshold applies to both, right? Threshold applies to both.
So what you're asking for is you'd like to know the full history of the piece of property from the very start?
Well, not necessarily from the very start, but I mean, if someone comes in with a subdivision that has a community sewer, then it's moot. But if, you know, I mean, I'm looking at this, and it's very apparent to me that a lot, A2, A2A, A1A, and A1B were all part of some kind of a division of land. So we're now up to five. Well, are there three more out there, and are we triggering the threshold for community sewer?
I would like to know, my clarification from the planning commission is, when do you start to create the original subdivision of a property and considering the date of when the ordinance was adopted, or date back to patent? Or at what threshold and date and time does it start to account the accumulation of lots? The original government subdivisions of sections?
I think that you look back at what, I mean, and I'm just throwing this as a recommendation. Clearly, I'm not answering your question, and I apologize for that, but, you know, I think you look back at Michelle Lane and the lots that aren't fronting on a public road and go from there, but I mean...
So when the private access servitude was created, is what you're saying?
Well, possibly. That's just a suggestion I'm throwing at staff.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward, talk on this property, please come forward. No one wishing to come? You want to come? No one wishing to speak? Public hearing is closed. Any other comments or questions? I'll wait for Julio to come back, so.
I don't think we have to. He left. I don't think we should hold the meeting for... I'm sorry?
You're right, we don't have to, but I just don't think it's going to be. Okay, what is a wish of the commission? You.
You're holding us up.
My apologies. I needed to be excused for a second.
Well, I'm going to make a motion to approve. I think we've got a statement from the applicant attesting to what the purpose of the use of the property is going to be. I don't think you're going to see this property resubbed. These two lots are not, you know, you got one that's .5, the other's .722. So I'm going to make a motion to approve.
I'll ask you if you would consider that the sheds be removed from the drainage servitude on the rear?
Be labeled to be removed.
Label to be removed, I'm sorry.
Yeah, be labeled to be removed. That's no problem. Go ahead and throw that in.
I'll second you.
Got a motion by Michael Marshawn, second by Julio Dumas for approval with the contingent that a note be added to, that the sheds will be removed. Any opposition? Motion carries. Okay, simple division of property, Spencer Goto property tracks 3A1A1A and 3A1A1B.
All right, the parish and consulting agency have one comment. They wanted to know how the sewer effluent would be conveyed off of track 3A1A1A. And that's in the middle. Right above the delineation of wetlands, it's not requested nor part of this survey, is the note. The method of sewage effluent will be conveyed down the existing road ditch along the east side of Tommy Norris Lane. And that was the only comment we had.
But that's a utility servitude, so that's a ditch and, that's a drainage and utility servitude?
Yeah, just as in the ordinance, it's required to have two drainage, or two roadside ditches on a road bed of at least 24 feet in width, and that those ditches are there.
Any questions or comments?
I just have a comment. It has nothing to do with the outcome of this, but I could not find this land, this property. It would have just been nice if we'd had an address on that residence. We could not find it. Several of us.
Oh, really?
It's easy for me to find. I don't know what... You have the vicinity map? If you want an easy to find any property in the parish, it's a tool I use, is that I go through the essential parish GIS system, and you can actually look at the aerial photograph, the name of the person owning on the property, as well as the tax assessment number, and have the possibility of giving the address.
I think we're supposed to have a name and an address on the plats. I know we've asked Charles to make sure, or, you know, that's been a requirement.
Family partitions or simple partitions with variances?
Everything.
I don't see that in the ordinances anywhere.
It's a policy.
Oh. Is that written anywhere? Are you just going to go by memory?
It's a policy. We've always required it.
I think I had that last month. I'd be happy to put it on that.
That would help out a lot when we try to locate them.
Okay.
Us a lot.
What if they don't have an address?
Well, you have a residence there. He should have an address.
What if they don't? It's just not required? Only if they have a residence?
If surrounding property owners have an address?
You want to submit a family partition address form?
Charles, isn't it a requirement that we have an address? Okay, if that had been on here, that would have been, that would have helped us also. If the surveyor had put the adjoining property owner's address on the plat, that would have helped us also.
On the simple partitions, that's a requirement. Only on the variances or on simple partitions without adequate road frontage?
Why don't you just put it on every one, and then there's no question?
It's extra work, and I have quite a client to pay for that work.
It can't be that much work to put the name of the address on there. If you're going through a GIS system, that expense alone is quite costly. I don't think it's any more for you to do that.
So you want the address on...
I want to be able to find the property. You're not accommodating anybody if you can't locate the property.
Easy to find.
Nobody, how many? Three of them, three tried to find it and couldn't find it.
I don't know what to tell you.
All right, well, then, let's make this the easy way.
I'll do that. If you want a requirement, starting with this one, that's easy enough. But I don't know where you...
Any other comments or questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve with the variance providing lot frontage on track 3A1A1B, I don't know if I can say that, and the elimination of 15-foot rear yard drainage servitude as required by staff, and the plat being amended to comply with all of the policy requirements of plat recordations that are currently in place.
I still...
Which includes the placement of name and addresses of surrounding property owners.
And I'm not sure the drainage servitude isn't supposed to be shown also. I know he said it's not.
No, he's asking it to be waived.
I'm sorry?
Staff recommends that it be waived.
No, the one going, the other one, the one on 3A, 1A, 1A, that he says is in the, using a ditch on the servitude, the other?
That's the ditches parallel to the pavement that are in the servitude of passage.
And we're going to accept it that way?
Well, that's the way the road's built. That's a cross-section of the passage, servitude of passage.
That it be built that way.
Okay.
He's just saying that the discharge is going to occur on the east side of the road, rather than the west side of the road.
I mean, so your motion is basically just accommodate staff and, because you said a lot to...
I'm sorry.
You want to run through...
Let me say it again. I make a motion to approve...
I know, I got that.
With the variance for the lot frontage on track 3A1A1B. The elimination of the 15-foot rear yard drainage as recommended by staff, and the inclusion of all surrounding property owner name and addresses as included in the policy addressing plats, and all other required components of said policy.
Motion by Julio to approve with the conditions of variance and eliminate the rear servitude and add all adjacent property owners as required. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Don Grant. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you. Not to be confusing, but maybe a lot of clarification, because that explains to my clients, but if we...
Next item on the agenda...
Some kind of policy written down.
Public hearing, thank you, Mr. Whitman. Public hearing to consider amending planning commission policy concerning subdivisions and wastewater permits.
I think all we need to do is amend the policy so that it reads, "On any subdivision of nonlots or more, the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality Preliminary Determination Letter of Approval for Wastewater Discharge shall be submitted in accordance with the deadlines for submission of the preliminary plat."
Mr. Harrington, I apologize. I meant to email you this question, and I apologize for the tardiness of it, but, you know, the code has an eight lot, simple family partition that requires a community sewer service. Would it not be in the parish's interest to just use the number eight rather than nine or...
I think after eight, you have to have it, right?
Right, after eight.
So it's nonlots or more. Nine comes after eight.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, wait, O'Neil.
Cuban math.
Wait.
I'm sorry.
I know I asked you this question last week, but tonight, we approved 13 individual lots.
Right.
Either through family partitions or simple divisions. What are we going to do about those?
It's a DEQ issue that we're really talking about here. DEQ is requiring this for the treatment plants. So when you're doing a small...
Individual treatment plants?
Yeah, those are not, right now, they're not requiring that. That's why, that's why this really came from the parish president and from the engineering staff. The DEQ is now saying, when you can have a private sewer treatment plant for a subdivision, they want to say upfront where they want the effluent to go. Doesn't really say anything about, DHH still inspects the plant and all that, but they want to know upfront, this is where you're going to put your effluent. In fact, they're going to tell you. They're not going to want to know.
Is there a way to be, okay, they brought this to us because they're reacting to what I understand is the problem over in Livingston, and...
I don't know that. This was sent to the parish over a year ago, and nobody's acted on it.
Okay, well, I saw that in the paper recently, and then we got the letter. So that's why I assumed it was what was happening.
No, the letter's a year old. It just never got, the last administration never passed it out.
Okay, okay. Well, my question was, shouldn't we be proactive on these individual lots instead of waiting for the problem? Shouldn't we be proactive, find a way to do this with the individual lots?
The only problem with that is, and we've run into this before, is ultimately what they're going to lead to is that whoever wants to do these private, these big private sewer treatment plants are going to have to have written servitude agreements where these little small treatment plants are going into the parish road ditches and things like that. I mean, I really think it's more of an engineering issue than a legal issue. I think that's who we need to be, who we need to speak with on how we want to do that for the small ones. DHH is not going to have a mechanism. That's the, they're not... That's the, they're not doing this. It's DEQ that's doing it. DEQ handles where the effluent goes on those major treatment plants. I think DHH just inspects the plant itself.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
So who, somebody would have to be responsible for doing that if you went less than the treatment plants, which, and we don't do sewage, so we don't have, we'd have to get into the sewage business and maybe we will eventually, but right now, we're not in a position to do that.
Okay.
So we have a public hearing?
Mm-hmm.
You've got to have a public hearing.
Yeah. Like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward, speak on this issue? Please come forward. No one wishing to come forward? Public hearing is closed. Any other comments, questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Julio Dumas, seconded by Beverly Barre. Any opposition? Next item on the agenda, public hearing to consider adoption of the policy of the TND Final Plat Summital Checklist. Everybody has in their packet a checklist for TNDs. I guess we wanted to develop this for these new developments coming forward. Anybody have any questions, amendments? Everything looks in order? I'll let, give you a moment to look at it. Okay, let me go ahead and open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward, comment on this, please come forward. No one wishing to speak? Public hearing is closed. Any comments, questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Sherri Slimon to approve, seconded by Julio Dumas. Any opposition? Motion carries. Committee reports, subdivision ordinance committee.
Okay, we did meet and we met, and I hope I get his name right, Mr. Throckmorton. He is, he came to our meeting and he is code enforcement and he, Ricky is getting with him and they are going to write some procedures for, for his job. We didn't even know he was in existence until he came to this meeting. So they are writing up some procedures to clarify his position for us and we have some other things we're working on and I guess everybody knows Chris is leaving, so again, we're losing a valuable member of our team and I'm sure we will have a replacement soon. Our next meeting, we're going to go ahead and meet, instead of meeting the last Monday, which would be Memorial Day, we're going to meet June the 2nd at 2:00. And we may end up having to have two meetings in June just to, because July will have another holiday.
Okay, thank you, Sherri. Strategic planning. O'Neill, did you attend?
I'll do.
I never get their memos that they're having a meeting until it's too late, so. Anybody? Rick went?
I don't have any notes.
New business? Any new business? Any old business other than, that's first item on the agenda. I think last month, the Peter Loita property came before us. We gave them a 30-day extension to make some revisions to the plot and at this time, we'd like to go ahead and review the revisions and have comments, questions? Yes, sir, go ahead.
My name is Scott Lobel with Lobel Engineering and Land Surveying. I represent Mr. Peter Leota in the family partition. We spent the past month, we did some additional research on some of the neighboring properties, particularly Ms. Rhonda Yelverton's property. We had found that she has a 20-foot servitude of passage on her property. Also, Mr. Leota took the time to negotiate with her, allowing her to dedicate, or if she would dedicate a portion of that servitude for him to jog on over onto his property. She is willing to do that. We added her name to the dedication, so she will also sign the plat acknowledging that she's allowing it. We provided a blow-up as requested of the area with that corner and we also hatched her area of the servitude that she's going to allow Mr. Leota to cross over. With that said, we'd like to request approval.
Thank you. Commissioners, comments or questions?
The detail made it much easier to understand what was going on.
Does this, are we continuing the public hearing from last month since it was deferred or do we have to reopen a public hearing?
Did we close the public hearing?
Yes, I'm looking at the minutes right here.
Yeah, no, we don't have to.
What is the wish of the commission?
Well, now that you've addressed the access issue, I move for approval.
Have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas, seconded by Beverly Barre. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Any other old business? Okay, moving on. Item D, everybody has a letter in their packet. If you recall, last month, we had asked CSRS to give us an update on the continuation of their service with the understanding it would expire this month, so we would go forward with either a retainer contract with them if so desired. And as everyone sees, Mr. Michael Sanji wrote us a letter, wrote me a letter specifically saying that they withdraw that offer and at this time, they would like to decline and not pursue any further work with us as a engineering review agency. So as of this time, we have no engineer review agency. Chris Ewing, as we all know, is on staff and has been filling in quite nicely for them. And I also would like to take the moment to thank CSRS for their excellent work in the past, I guess, three or four years. They've supported us and provided needed information for us to make these decisions on these subdivisions. And like I say, Chris has been filling in quite nicely, but as Sherri mentioned, we will be losing Chris very shortly, so we may have a little problem to address and of course, we'll have to work with the parish council and the parish staff to overcome and see how we move forward. Anybody have any comments?
Well, who's going to do the engineering review function for the next meeting? You know any civil engineers now?
No, I don't. Quit looking at me. Well, Chris's last day, I think, is, tell me.
I thought you looked great.
June 1st?
Someone covered their magazine.
Say it again, one?
May 31st.
May 31st, thank you. So we have until May 31st. After that, I can't.
Do you have any information on that, Ricky, on Mr. Becknow, as to who, who and what and how they're going to handle it?
But you're moving forward, replacing Rick, advertising the position and whatever.
We are advertising the position, yes.
Item number E. Panzi Wells Property Family Partition Appeal of Decision of Application.
How you doing? James Fowler representing Ms. Panzi Wells on the following family partition, asking the commission for reconsideration. The lot dimensions have changed. We reduced them out. Wish, asking the commission for approval to reschedule.
Commissioners, have any questions or comments?
I thought they were just, this was just a application for, to come back before us.
Yes.
Right, okay, okay.
Yes, ma'am. We reduced the lot, so she decided just to give it to her children, not the grandkids.
I'll just make a comment for you real quick. You know, I think you need to, that's a long way to drive, to find yourself having a backup. I would suggest you come up with some kind of a T-turnaround.
Mm-hmm.
Or some kind of a turnaround that meets, meets standards.
I'm sure they have a driveway going to their house from there, I would think, would imagine, but not a problem.
I'll make a motion to reschedule this for next month, for the month of June, public hearing.
Okay, have a motion by Julio Dumas to put on next month's agenda to rehear. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Steve Barrow. Any opposition? Motion approved.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Number 16, motion by Julio Dumas to adjourn. We will, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Michael Marshawn. Meeting adjourned, we'll convene in 10 minutes for a combination planning and zoning meeting to review a spud. Thank you.